Evening, everyone, and over to you, Commissioner Angie.
Not Commissioner Angie. I think Kevin is used to this process, so...
Hi, this is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'd like to call to order all of our Budget Committee meetings.
Thank you.
I'm the common thread through all of them, so I see here. Okay.
Yes. Well, and tonight, we actually don't have to call to order, because this isn't an official meeting. It's just an orientation, but we are covered in either case, so thank you, Chair, for that. So, tonight, in your packet, was everyone able to access the packet materials? There was a PowerPoint? Okay, if you were not, please feel free to see myself, or John, or Brenda, who has her hand up in the back, and she can help teach you how to navigate the website. I know it can be sometimes challenging the first time you're trying to access materials. So, next slide, oh, we have the clicker. So, this evening, we are going to go through welcome and introductions. I know when we were online, we just briefly shared who was on the committees, but we're going to go a little bit deeper this evening. The questions, and just so you can start thinking, I will be asking, is your name? That's a good start. What budget committee you serve on, and why you have chosen to serve on a budget committee? We asked this question last year, and Budget Committee members actually shared they valued hearing the different perspectives of why they participate within this process. We will then talk about the calendar. John Steyer, our interim CFO, will lead us through local budget law. We'll talk about budget basics, process, resources, property taxes, budget committee, next steps, and questions. We will not get into this evening components of this year's proposed budget. So, really, if you think about, tonight is just state budget law, which we have to make sure that we follow, and John will dive a bit deeper into that, and just the nuts. So with that, let's transition into introductions. So I'll start with myself, and then we're gonna, I'll transition it to John Steyer, and then we'll have a roving mic, and we'll just go down the list. So, Chair, yep, you are getting ready. You will be first. So, my name's Tanya Angie, and I'm honored to serve as your county administrator. Why do I choose to participate in this process? Because it's a core function of my job. More so, I truly believe in my role and role as local government employees. We are stewards of democracy, and the budget document is one of the most important policy documents, because it aligns what our available resources are to what those services are going to be for our community. So it's really seeing dollars in action, and it's really important to community livability. And with that, I'll turn to my left and ask John to introduce himself.
Thank you. I'm John Steyer. I'm the interim Chief Financial Officer, and I'm excited to be here tonight and to talk to you a little bit about the budget and budget process and the law. What's exciting for me about the budget is it, like Ms. Angie said, it does put policy into context, into action. But also is an opportunity for the public to have a voice in how we spend resources. And so I think that's the most important thing about the budget. We hear what the constituents have to say. We take that into consideration, and we build a balanced budget to manage the resources that we're given. So, I'm excited to be part of that.
So Grace is gonna pass the mic around, and Grace, if you can just work down the list of commissioners first.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Catherine Harrington, the elected county chair. What was the second question?
Why are you here? Why is the budget process important to you?
Because I'm supposed to understand all of those budgets. By the way, Karen Boland is on her way. ETA about 10 minutes.
And this isn't a test. There's no trick question. It just is your personal question and answer.
I do this, because I love Washington County, and I think budgets are cool.
There.
How we get stuff done.
And good evening, everyone. Nefisa Fai, Commissioner for District One. And I love Washington County. That's why I'm here.
Good evening. I'm Pam Trace, District Two Commissioner. And as been said, we're here because we're supposed to be here, and this is part of our responsibility. But I also feel strongly that as we go through this budget process, we really make sure that our values and what we think is important are reflected in our budget, and it's where the rubber meets the road for all of us. So, thank you.
Jason Snyder. I'm the District Three County Commissioner, newly elected. I, Pam said words that describe what I'm, the one word I'm gonna use, which is that this is about our priorities and putting those into action. This is act, I also started, really, in my local government role in Oregon on a budget committee for the city of Tigard. So just be careful, because what could happen in 20 years is you might be sitting up here or on a city council, or the prior mayor of Tigard was actually on the Washington County Budget Committee for a long period of time. So, that's what matters to me is the, it really is a reflection of the priorities of our organization and what we value.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. Jerry Willey, District Four Commissioner. And we take this pretty seriously as commissioners. We are stewards of the county money and making sure that we understand and hear the priorities of the constituents of the Washington County. And we want to make sure that we can honor their wishes, at the same time, maintain a balanced budget, because our printing press for the money broke a while back, so we no longer have that.
Jerry, Grace will come and get the mic, and then we're going to transition to the Washington County and Service District for Lighting, number one. Joe, thank you for being here. So, Joe, we're just, name what committee you serve on, which I already announced that. And why have you decided to serve on a budget committee? And Grace will give you the mic.
Yep, I'm Joe Everton, Washington County, SCL number one. I mean, some great things have been said already about why this is so important. I guess I'm interested in helping put another pair of eyes on it and on the problems that we're trying to solve, and give community input so we can get the best possible solutions.
So we'll move past Karen and on to Melissa.
Hi, I'm Melissa Laird, Washington County, SCL number one, Budget Committee. And I'm on the Budget Committee, because I've lived in Washington County over 40 years. I raised my family here. I care deeply about this county. And so it's important to me to understand how we make money, how we get our money, how we spend our money, and make sure that's matching the needs of all the residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. And Sig.
Thank you. I'm Sig Yunander Jr., second year on the Budget Committee, and the answer is pretty much the same as the first. It's about budgeting priorities to echo Commissioner Snyder. And I bring a perspective, a long perspective, since the 80s of my district, which I shared with Commissioner Jerry Willey. And also experienced as a elected city councillor, five Washington County Committees, including the Aging Veteran Services Committee and the Housing Committee, so I see that as a continuation of that service. Thank you.
And next to you, Sig, is Jeff.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jeff Sarafa, and I'm here to represent the Washington County Budget and Service District Lighting Number One. And I live in Hillsborough. I have a lot of experience in my career in finance and budgeting, so I thought I'd be, why I'm here is to contribute what I've learned in private industry to help with the budget here in Washington County, and provide the community input, like Joe was saying. I've always looked at budgets as a way to connect the strategy to execution. So, I think it's really important for us to be able to do that, to execute on what's important for our community.
Thank you, Jeff. And we'll come back to Karen when Karen joins us, and we'll move to ESPD and Urban Roads Maintenance District. And there's Dick.
Yeah, I'm Dick Steinbergie. I'm a member of, as you've just heard, the ESPD URM-D Budget Committee. This is my third lap with this committee. So, I've seen the process twice before. I'm also a member, in fact, the chair this year, of the Urban Road Maintenance Advisory Committee, so there's a natural connection between the budget that emerges from this effort for that part of this committee's work and the other committee that I'm part of. I've lived in Washington County now for over 25 years, so I have a deep sense of desire to give back to the county now that I'm retired and I have the time to do that. So, this is a good thing for me to contribute toward.
Okay. Thank you. Grace will grab the mic, and I'm gonna mispronounce, but Pradna is unable to be here this evening, so Scott.
Thanks. I'm Scott Hartraff. I'm also part of the ESPD URM-D. I've been in Washington County for about 25 years. I'm actually an electrical and computer engineer, so I don't have a lot of experience in the budget field. But over the last couple of years, I've been getting in a lot of budgets at work, so exposed to transitions to some degree. And I've been getting into politics over the last 10 years or so, for interesting reasons. So, here I am to see what I can do to provide numbers assistance and help you.
Thanks, Scott. And Bob?
If you don't mind, I won't take a half an hour to stand up. Bob Zarowski, been a resident of Washington County now for about 45 years. And I've been involved with the ESPD for about 12 on the Sheriff's ESPD Advisory Committee. There's other committees over the past. I really have a strong tie to the community. I plan on dying here. So... No. But this will be my first time on the Budget Committee, but my background is teaching as a university professor, School of Business, and graduating seniors, graduating MBA students. And also as an international consultant for Fortune 100 companies. So I've looked at some large budgets and worked with them. So, hopefully, I'll learn, and I can have some, speak up, just say something about my background with the ESPD. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Mills, who, Grace Anthony's in the blue shirt right behind Catherine.
Thank you. I'm Anthony Mills. I'm on the ESPD URM-D Budget Committee. I was on it a couple of terms many years ago. I left just to give other people opportunities to serve on it, but they had an opening this time, so I filled in for that. I've been on other budget committees and a wide variety of things. I've lived in Loa since 1973, and representative democracy works when people get involved. And so, Loa would be the 11th largest city in Oregon if it was incorporated. It's not. So if you want to make a difference in your community, you gotta get involved. And so that's why I have, so. Thank you, and good to see everybody, some old friends and some new ones, so.
So now we'll move on to North Bethany, and we only have one member of the North Bethany Committee here, Bruce.
Hello, I'm Bruce Young. I'm retired Air Force. I spent the last about seven years of my Air Force career running a seven-figure budget. So I've got a little bit of experience in it. I've been a North Bethany resident since 2017, when me and my daughter bought a house and moved in. Three generations of our family at the time. Now it's four. My granddaughter had a son. The roads over in that area were in real weird shape when I first moved in, and that was the primary reason I got involved in this committee, but I think it's important. I'm trying to remember the phrase, but it basically is, things get done by people who show up. If you show up, you have a say. If you don't show up, then you don't have no complaint.
Thank you, Bruce. And thank you. We're gonna go back to the Washington County and Service District for Lighting. Karen, thanks for joining us. So just if you could introduce yourself, what commi, well, I already said what committee you're on, and why you continue to serve on a budget committee.
Thank you. So I'm Karen Boland. I'm a financial advisor, been one for 25 years. I enjoy finance. I enjoy numbers. I see my job as a lay member of the committee to go out and educate the community on the size of our budget, the FTEs, the flow chart. I've probably given six different little presentations on this is how it works. And people seem to receive it, and I'm encouraging them to come and participate. So I'm involved, because I want others to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. So, one of the themes that I've heard is care, and the care of each of the Budget Committee members for the Washington County community. It has come out in different ways through what you've shared, but care for Washington County, in the future of Washington County, is a common thread that unites us. And the budget is a glue that can be that conduit to delivering services. So just, I want to express appreciation, because we're just getting started on the journey. You haven't got the budget book. Wait till you get the many pages. The journey truly begins at that point of your study time, and then the many meetings that we will have together. So let's just do a high-level just review of the calendar of the events. So, this evening, thank you for being here on a sunny evening. I don't know about you, if you suffer from seasonal allergies, but my eyes are feeling like sandpaper, which is also a sign of spring. So, it's two sides of a coin. As a reminder, on April 28th, that will be where I present the budget message, a high-level budget summary, and the proposed, and deliver the full proposed budget. I'll dive a little bit deeper in future slides of what, the overview of that exact meeting. Then, May 14th and 15th, we will have our Budget Committee meetings. There will be different times set for your three different budget committees. And that continues on May 20th, and you can see where the special districts are outlined there. And then, on May 22nd, the Budget Committee meeting will run, and we'll have a clear schedule where the Washington County, when the Washington County Committee will be meeting, and then the different districts. We may, if we need additional time for the Budget Committees to deliberate, there is additional time that is available. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to John to talk about Oregon budget law.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for being here. I did have one handout that I put out for local budget in Oregon. And many of you, most of you are returning members, and so I'm sure you're very familiar. So I'm not sure there's something I'm gonna talk to you tonight about that you don't already know. But I hope to maybe spur some thought in your mind about budget law and kind of the importance of the job that the committees have in reviewing the budget. If anyone needs a copy, we can pass them around. There were some in the back. But that pamphlet is kind of a small piece of the larger Oregon budget law book that, as my role in the interim Chief Financial Officer, I'm becoming more familiar with. After spending five years in the Sheriff's Office, I didn't deal a lot with the intricacies of all the budget in the county, and so I'm excited to be part of this journey with all of you. So I would like to promote some discussion, and if you have questions...
Well, John, you may not have worked closely with it. I will say it is now bound with, you have multiple different colors of tabs on it, so I know that you have your reference pages.
I always say I may not know everything, but I know where to find it, so. Yeah, so let's dive in. So this is the Oregon budget law. Purpose is defined in ORS 294, 321. Chapter 294 is the budget portion of the Oregon statutes. As you can see, there's five phases there, and it's really to tell the financial story of a municipal county or municipal service in a standardized format. So you can go to any county or any city and find the same budget document information in the same format, which makes it comparable across entities. But the first step, of course, is to prepare and do the presentation and administration of a budget, so establish procedures, outline programs and fiscal policies, so a brief description of what the program is and what policies we follow. And then looking at revenues and expenses, and imposing property taxes. And then in the yellow, most important, I think, is to encourage citizen involvement in the Budget Committees, as you're doing, and also in testimony, as citizens come in and voice their views. And then the last piece is just to control expenditure of public funds. We want to enable investors to be able to go to documents and actually see that we're in a good state financially. And so the budget document and also our annual consolidated financial reports, which we're working on, and they're posted on our websites, also tell the story of our county's financial status. So I'd invite you to look at those if you have an interest, and I can help send the links. Next slide. Thank you. Oregon budget law, so there's about 55 different sections, I guess, within Chapter 294 that talk about budget law. This is just a handful of them. That talks about everything from assigning the budget officer, which from our county is appointed by ordinance, and that's Ms. Angie. She's our budget officer. Talks about the basis of accounting and how we record things in the funds, different types of funds, which I'll talk about later in the presentation. And also expenditure estimate sheets. So how do we present the budget? We present the budget, we have to show the current year, two preceding years, and then a projection for the upcoming year in that format, both expenditures and revenues, to keep consistent formats across different entities. I'll talk a lot about many of these. On the right side, just the formal process of providing notification to the public. We're required to do that. We're required to adopt and make appropriations. There's filing requirements after the budget's approved. Different things on just how to manage our funds. Do we need a supplemental appropriation? If we make the budget today, things change tomorrow. If they change by more than 10%, then we need to go back to this board, to the board, and do a supplemental process, have a public hearing, and look at the new budget requirements as we get them. So if you have questions, please jump right in. I'm not a big talker, but I kind of walk through some of these slides.
You're not a big talker, but you're good at the number part, so that's very essential. I will just say, one of the things about budget law, and John had mentioned this, is a degree of consistency between local governments, so that community members and others know how to engage in the process. I will say that there still is a degree of latitude that entities have in the budget document itself. Over the last few years, we've, and we're continuing to improve and iterate of including more narrative in the budget. By default, in a budget, you usually talk about what you're not doing, if you're in a cuts, or if you're able to increase, because you have increased revenues. Here's what we are going to do. But even within that, there's a high level of services that we deliver every day with the available resources. So, right now, we're trying to balance that with outdated old software that for Budget Committee members who are returning this year. Last year, we actually broke the software. So, what that meant is, real time, when we presented the budget to you, some things were missing that we thought were going to be in the document, and staff were working hours that were frankly unacceptable, trying to get to that point. And that was part because the system just is not nimble to make the changes that contemporary software is. So, we're looking forward, as we move to this proposed budget, because in the upcoming years, as we do update our enterprise resource management system, which is our core financial HR systems, we'll have the opportunity to increase the content, the type, the format content in our budget. So please just know that your input will be valued, how to make this more readable and usable to you, both from returning committee members and also our new committee members. I think it was Scott, if I remember. You're new to public budget. I'll just say it's a little confusing at first, so please ask questions. And we welcome all questions, because actually, the questions that you ask help us present information to all community members in a way that helps create transparency and understanding of public dollars.
Back to what is a budget. Very simply put, it's our financial plan for the fiscal year, beginning 1 July through 30 June. And so that's coming up pretty quick for us. It allows us to evaluate requirements against available resources. And it represents a complete budget, so justifies imposition of property taxes and allows us to appropriate funds, which provides us the authority to spend public money. And why do we do that? Well, because it's law, but it's created to identify appropriations, but also control spending, and it's a vehicle for obtaining public opinion and also sharing our fiscal policies through our budget process. And it's created by, in this slide, three phases, basically. It delineates the roles of staff, the budget officer, the budget committees, and the Board of Commissioners. So, the budget is prepared and proposed by the staff and the budget officer. It's modified and approved by the Budget Committees, and it's modified and adopted by the board. And so, three-step process, sounds pretty simple. There's a lot of work that goes into that.
So in those three steps, you may hear me stress, this is proposed budget. This is proposed budget, and repeating that, because it is just the proposed budget. You serve a very important role, that you actually approve the budgets that then move forward to the Board of Commissioners to be adopted. So those three words do have significance within the process.
Thank you. And the Oregon Rebius statutes and the Oregon Administrative Rules can dictate how we create the budget. I talked earlier a lot about the Oregon Rebius statutes, but in the Oregon Administrative Rules, there you can find key definitions, defining things like taxing authority, define a budget document, define an organizational unit. Because within a budget, we have funds, org units, and programs, and you'll see that in the budget document many of you are familiar with. Example of an org unit might be, we have a sheriff's office jail, or sheriff's office law enforcement is an organization within a fund. There's a cycle to develop the budget process, and the handout that I provided to you, it kind of talks about a nine-step process. This modifies it a little bit. But bottom line, steps one through three are the preparation. And so our budget officers, Ms. Tanya Angie is our budget officer, and then we also appoint electors to the Budget Committees, and then work to prepare the budget, and we do that between October and April. Steps four through six, approving. We publish notice. We have Budget Committee meetings. We receive the budget message and hear public comment, and deliberate and approve the budget. Then step seven through eight, there is advertise and hold hearings. And then the last step is to adopt the budget. So we make appropriations, we levy taxes, and then we file the budget and certify the documentation. It's more a cycle. It's a continuous cycle, so once we finish one, we start the next one. Some entities have a two-year, biannual budget. County, we do a one-year budget process. And so that's the steps.
Anthony, I'm gonna ask that we use the mic, just for individuals who may watch this afterwards. This will be on YouTube and available. Thank you.
So, step three, well, step two, the Budget Committee is made up of the five commissioners, and then generally, five lay members.
Right. Do you want to say on that one?
The previous one, yeah, right there. Thank you. Okay, so obviously modify and approve by the Budget Committee in step two, but step three, you have modified. Since it's adopted by the Board of Commissioners, which is only the five commissioners, how much modification can happen at that point without the input of the five lay members of the Budget Committee?
That's a very good question.
It is, in statute and Oregon budget law, I believe it is about 10% of the budget. I'd have to go back and make sure that it's the 10%. So, the reason we have modified is the Budget Committee can make amendments. So on the 28th, we will let you know what that amendment process is. And then your Budget Committees would be approving it with any amendments you so choose. It does need to be balanced, so I do want to underscore that. It can't just be, for example, increasing the revenues or increasing the expenditures. And then, within that 10%, the Board of Commissioners has the latitude to amend or any decisions that your committees make in their adoption.
And then on the 10%, I had a question. Is that... And then on the 10%, I had a question, is that cumulative over the year? Or are you able to change it 9% without input from the budget committee every month?
So, the county has two budget supplementals, and our budget supplementals are typically because we receive new revenues. It could be, and over this next year, it could be loss of revenues. For example, there, we do have uncertainty of federal funds this year. We have not had a process where we have had the need to reconvene the budget committee to do so. It really has been because we've received a grant that we weren't expecting, or there was not, the timing of the receipt of the grant did not coincide with the budget process. If that happens, many times, we do make note of it within the budget document and/or the budget committee, that we do anticipate these revenues coming to the county, but the timing was off.
Thank you.
That's a really good question. Thank you for that.
Sorry, I'm gonna add one detail, too. So, two supplemental budgets, the board could, if we needed emergency supplementals, take that as needed. So hypothetically, let's say there's an emergency, let, I'll say wildfires, or some type of emergency, that we would need an emergency budget supplemental. The board does have that authority to do that outside of the budget process.
So I did want to highlight in the preparation phase, it really starts early in the fall. And last fall, we started with several roundtable discussions with the Board of Commissioners, and I know many of you may have listened, some of you may have listened to those sessions online, because they're recorded, to talk about fiscal focus in September, and then get some direction for the county administrator in December, and then setting some principles and priorities in January. I think this is really key in order to have some input in setting the tone and directing the staff on how to, how to plan for the budget process. And then from there, the county administrator will take the information based on the guidance from the board, develop a kickoff message. And the work kind of begins in earnest in December, when the county administrator provides the budget message, kickoff message. This past year, we... Where was I gonna go with this? Before, before the time, before the budget messages, I wanted to say that the departments aren't waiting until that budget message to start their work, right? They're starting ahead of time, they're already looking at requirements, what did they do last year, and they're kind of developing their thought process. And then based on the budget message, we might, the county minister might provide some scenarios. In the past five years, we've had to look at reduction scenarios in the departments. This year is no different. We were, and the message, we're given 10, 13, and 17% scenarios to look at for reductions to the general fund. And so, the whole process enables the departments to think, as we're going along the process, how best to build their budget and what recommendations to make. If you want to make some comments.
So, our budget process doesn't stop, I'll just say, at the county. And I think especially with our, within our general fund, the last time we were together, we had talked about just our fiscal context, specific to the general fund, and conversations that your Board of Commissioners has had, leading to their budget direction that they give to me as the budget officer or county administrator. Something that John said is, I just want to underscore, if you see one service or one fund, you see one service or one fund, they're not created equal. Our service, some services are mandated by the state, that we need to deliver that service level. Some of those services, we receive full funding for, some, we don't receive full funding, funding for only partial, and some are just unfunded completely. And so, that is the reason, here at the county, we do the different scenarios. And this year, if you looked specifically, and I'll focus on the general fund, at the $20.5 million reduction, we would need to cut approximately 10%. That would be straight across the board. Because not all services are created equal, we, that's not possible. And so hence, the scenarios of 10, 13, and 17. The scenarios would have been different this year, if but for we weren't on year five of budget cuts. So, the scenarios help determine, are we going to meet those state mandates? Do we, do we have the ability for discretionary programs, maybe to reduce the service level? And in some cases, do we need to deliver the service, or could someone else deliver the service as well?
Thank you. So, as departments present their proposals in February, then the county administration team will evaluate those and prepare the proposed budget for the county in March and April. And there's really a lot of work that goes into a whole process, and if you look at the right side of the chart, it makes it look very simple, that we just estimate resources, we estimate requirements, and we balance the budget. But there's, there's a lot that goes into that to make it all work, and then, of course, things can change, so.
I wish it was that easy.
So we do budgeting by fund, like I mentioned before, and that maintains county records by those funds, using the various, the modified accrual accounting basis. The funds are fiscal entities, they're reported in our annual comprehensive financial report, and so they have to be self-balancing, show resources liabilities and changes, and of course, they're segregated for specific activities and objectives. County, we have over 100 funds, and if you look at the fund combination, fund program, fund org program, then we have more than 450 combinations of those. So if you have one fund, it might have a couple of orgs and different programs that are within that fund, and those are all managed and reported on.
I will just note, I had mentioned earlier this evening, and also the last time we met, we are in the process of implementing Workday, which is our enterprise resource management system. One of the best practices, exercises to do is to look at your chart of accounts. Our chart of accounts, over time, has frankly grown, because our current financial system does not have the sophistication to actually separate out what's called orgs, I'll, orgs, I'll call them programs, so that you can clearly track true cost of service for programs. So, we are currently looking at, should we reduce the amount, do we have an opportunity to reduce the amount of funds? Because we will have a more sophisticated system that can get us to that true cost of service that we need to be doing calculations for. Why is that important? There's a huge carrying cost from a financial management for John and his team to be managing all of those funds, once we get to the audit process, auditing all of those funds. So, I'm just giving you a heads up for those that, and I hope you all return for next year again, just that you'll continue to see changes within our budget document as we continue through this financial transformation.
Just to add on to, I mean, next year, you will see a large change in our structure. So the next year's budget cycle will have a new chart of accounts, and so, that hasn't happened here in 20 years. So it's a big deal. It's a big deal. Okay, just wanted to talk about the different types of funds, and so, we have money in most of these different types of funds. From left to right, the top, the general fund, you know, most of our energy and discussion goes into general fund, because that's provides for the general services in the county, and it's limited by the amount of revenue we can generate in property tax, but also interest and fees, and other revenues and expenditures that go into support the general fund. We have special revenues, so this is the largest part of our budget. We have many funds that are special revenues. An example of that are the ESPD, URMD, supportive housing services, there's a number of many special revenue funds that, that we have. Internal service funds, those are relatively new for us in the last couple of years, we've just pulled that out of what it used to be in the general fund, to just GFOA best practices, to have internal services funds that provide departments, show the amount of goods and services that are interdepartmental, provided for, for all the departments. For example, facilities, fleet services provide services to all departments, or HR, or finance provide services to all departments, they're internal service funds.
So if I can just add on that why? Why did we do that? Yes, it's GFOA. GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association Best Practice. But when we think about true cost of service, what is that cost of delivering a service? Internal services, HR, finance, facility, fleets, IT, all are connected to those services. So there is what's called a cost allocation plan, that a department, let's say the sheriff's office, is charged from those internal services. We were always doing that, but it wasn't clear, because they were, there were transfers going back and forth within the general fund. So by separating out the internal services, we can help manage the cost or the growth of internal services over time, and more clearly show that connection from internal services to the specific departments.
Much more transparent. On the last one, on the right top, there are enterprise funds, so it's a fund to support a business entity. And here, example, that would be our fairgrounds event center, would be an enterprise fund. On the second row down the bottom, capital project fund, so this houses revenue from general obligation bonds, or local option levies for capital projects, or grant dollars to finance a capital project. And here, example, might be our 2016, we had emergency communication systems on measure, so that was a capital project. And then that, that capital project, the bond would be serviced in a debt service fund, so established to pay debts to general obligation bonds for those projects. And they must have trust in agency funds. Example of this might be property tax payments, so we collect all the property taxes for the county, and then we have to distribute those out to the municipal entities that, for the portions that go by law to those entities. So out of all the property taxes that we collect, we get about 17 cents of that, and the rest, we have to distribute out on the dollar. Another example of that would be the transient lodging tax that we collect. We also have to distribute those dollars out to the entities as we collect the dollars and revenue. The last one, the reserve fund, might be used to accumulate funding from a general fund or grants for a service project, property or equipment. And the example here would be, we have Fund 207, which is a prevention treatment recovery center for addiction and triage treatment, the CAT, so we put money aside for that project and implemented that project here recently, so. Any questions on types of funds? I'm gonna move from that to talk a little bit about taxes. Everybody's maybe favored some, I don't know. And then, of course, there's permanent taxes, there's local option taxes, and then the general fund, general obligation bond levy is another form of tax. When you talk about ad valorem, that's supposed to just Latin, it means to add value, the terminology that's used. On the permanent rate there, so our permanent property tax rate, Measure 50, limits us to 3% growth per year. And then we also have ESPD as a permanent rate, and a local option levy rate, for example, that might be in two buckets. And then for the general obligation bond levy, the one I previously mentioned, the emergency 911 bond levy, that was approved in 2016. And then we also have other levies, our bonds, where we can do full faith and credit bonds to finance capital projects as well.
So I'll kind of connect this presentation to our last discussion. So, permanent rate funds, general fund services, so assessment and taxation, sheriff's office, DA's office, and many other general fund departments. It also is a transfer to MISTIP, which is the Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program, as well as WCLS, the Washington County Cooperative Library System. Then, local option taxes, public safety levy, I had mentioned, we have two levies that are up for replacement this year. That's the public safety levy, so public safety gets funded both by our permanent rate and also from local option, because our level of permanent rate does not fully fund the needs within public safety. And that is the same within the library system. So I just want to try to, I'm gonna continue to try to connect the two presentations for you.
Thank you. Look at that, resources, there's a whole host, a rainbow, I guess I call this a rainbow of resources available, and there's never seems to be enough. But it starts with the beginning, cash balance, so what do we have on hand from last year? And we maintain a contingency in each of the funds, primarily to get you through until property taxes come in, for general fund, for example, or for special funds, there might be specific requirements that are needed to keep cash on hand for contingency, and so those are set. We have a policy 404 that delineates those levels for each of the funds. There's user fees, grants and donations. Examples, there are donations, the sheriff's office has the Sheriff's Foundation, and we receive, the sheriff's office receives a lot of support, it supports K-9 teams and other entities in the sheriff's office, it's a huge partner to help with the things that are needed, that can't be budgeted or are not budgeted. There's bonds, and other borrowing proceeds. We're currently looking at a bond measure for, or bond issuance, a full faith and credit to support our MISTIP program, which Ms. Ange just talked about. There's interfund transfers, so between departments, services are needed, another department will provide it, and those payments will happen. And then we are in interest on deposits, and also, of course, property taxes, both the prior year, because we receive delinquent taxes, and then also the current year through the process. All right, any questions at all on funds, taxes, or revenues? Yes. Yeah.
Thank you. Do you mind going back one slide about the local option levies and bonds? My question is on local option taxes, where it says that it's temporary, it covers operations for one to five years of capital projects for lesser of 10 years or life of the item. I see on ballots frequently a renewal of a local option levy, so it, does that mean that if it's capped for operations at five years, that's what I see as the renewal on the ballot? People are just saying, continue that local option levy?
Yeah. Renewal is at the end point of the five years, it's renewal at the same rate. If it's a replacement, that means it's at a higher or lower rate.
Okay. How long does it take for the county government and all the people needed to prepare the local option levy, if it's a brand-new levy, to get all the administrative work done to prepare for that type of ballot measure to be done?
Oh. As a follow-up for the budget committees, we will share a timeline for both our public safety levy and our Washington County Cooperative Library System, so I can better answer, because there's periods of time within that planning, from planning for what it's, what's needed, from polling, especially in the case of the libraries working with our multiple partner libraries through the process. So we'll send that out, Jeff, as a follow-up.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to get a sense of, like, I'm hoping we're far enough ahead of whatever that need is.
We, we are on track for, on our timeline, for the board to consider referring both to the ballot. And the board has been very focused on making sure that we are on track for those timelines.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Based upon my service in two different elected roles with a whole bunch of levies and bond measures, the minimal amount of time is six months, but it, in one case, it was over two years.
And that over two years, especially if it's a new, a new levy, a new measure, because that's new taxes. And that over two years, especially if it's a new, a new levy, a new measure, because that's new taxes on the community.
Great question. I'm going to shift over and talk about the budget committees and kind of some of the roles and whatnot. You know, we have three committees, you all know that. These maps kind of highlight the, where, where the services are provided. So you know that as well. I would just highlight ESPD and URMD are the urban services. And the Service District for Lighting, that can be also in urban or rural areas. So it might be the distinction between those two. And then the North Bethany County Service District for Roads is a very small section on the map in the little red circle area. But it impacts a good number of people in the area where they're making sure the roads are, are good.
So this does not show up very well on the slide, but if you do, in your, in your packet, oh. Brenda's pointing to these, I can't see these TV monitors from where I sit, so it's easier to see the colors. But if you do go in your packet, which is available online, it does show the maps much more clearly. And I do want to just underscore one of the points that John had made. We do have the Washington County General Budget and the county and District for Lighting, county-wide. Service District for Lighting has a specific footprint. Then when we look at ESPD, URMD and North Bethany, those are covering unincorporated areas. So county property taxes are for county-wide use, that has been a longstanding budget principle. As we have, and I think Anthony, it was you that spoke about Aloha and the unincorporated areas. Over time, the county has adopted special districts to deliver city-like urban or urban services to areas that are unincorporated.
Just a few bullets on the budget committee member overview. And so budget committees are composed of the Board of Commissioners and an equal number of electors. So we have five commissioners and five electors, so 10 people for a committee. And so to have a quorum, to actually hold a budget committee meeting, we need to have a quorum and that number has to be the majority of the membership. So if we have 10 members, we have to have six present to hold the meeting. Appointments are staggered through your terms, and I know this past year we ran into where we had if you fill, if you were elected or brought into a position that was filling out a term of someone who left, then the term ended earlier than what was expected. And so both Jeff and Sig re-applied again this year and thank you for your service to step back in and working through our process of appointments. Each member has one vote and so it's not, you know, someone has more voice than the other. All right. One of my last slides, just so, this is probably one of the most important things. What are your duties as budget committee members? To meet and receive the budget message and proposed budget, review it and ask, ask questions. Many of you were on the committee last year and there's a lot of questions out there and they're still out there. If you have time or want to go back and review questions that were asked last year, it might be different because the budget's different this year, but some of the questions might be the same and they're a good refresher. But I encourage you to ask the smart questions, put us to the test. You know, we're very transparent.
And I'll say every question's a smart question.
No dumb questions. And then also consider comments from the public. The public will come in and provide testimony, consider what they have to say and weigh the pros and cons of that and deliberate and make changes if necessary. But we still need to have the balanced budget. So at the end of the day, we have to come out of here with a balanced budget. And then the last responsibility is to approve the budget and, and tax levy. So simple task, right? All right, I'm going to bring us back to grounding here, back to where we are.
Yeah, so next steps, actually before we move on to next steps, I am actually, we're going to do a mic pass if anyone has thoughts. And I would like to actually ask especially returning budget committee members about duties. Is there anything that you would highlight that you think is important as far as you approach the budget committee process? What you wish you would have known before you started that no one told you? That would be helpful, especially for our new members or also just for all of us to hear your perspective.
So the many years that I've served, what I've learned is there's a lot of numbers that come to the county from other sources. So I think it would be helpful for members to know where those other numbers come from because we can't change some of those. So I've learned that over the years, but that might be something that newer people might not understand. So I think that'd be an area. And then this go around, I think 14 years ago was my first year. We decided to set money aside and build the Whiz Bang Wingspan Center. And I remember promises being made that that was going to earn us some money and be this great thing. And I'm interested this year to hear if any of those promises have come true.
Thank you, Karen. Joe?
Joe here, yeah, I think my first year, the thing that kind of surprised me, I mean, towards the budgeting process, what, what we'll see is amendments proposed, right? And I didn't have any ideas for amendments my first year. I didn't have any ideas for my second as well, but they do come up and it's good to review them and kind of understand what's going on. But just expect that that's part of the process.
Thank you. Last year was my first year on the budget committee and I was very pleased to hear the spirit of debate that exists in the room and it was an open forum, so use your voice if you're new and listen and ask questions. And so I was really pleased about that and I felt like everybody had a voice and it was equal. So that was a very good attribute for the way it's run, as well as just giving people a chance to use the microphone. And I think as a member of the public, what's interesting is trying to understand, it's, that statute book that you have, John, is, is, you know, full of dense information that we can't distill. So it's hard for us to know what's mandated by the state and what's not mandated by the, mandated by the state and what's partially funded, what's fully funded, what's unfunded. Those are things that are just, I, I'm sure it's hard for everybody in this room. So the more clarity we can get in those areas, the better as we make, try to make decisions.
So I just can't help myself, it's a journey we're on too, Jeff. This, the Board of Commissioners has been, has asked for that. We will be presenting this week, next week? I'm losing track of weeks. The first ever, yeah, county-wide service level assessment that will, that's aimed to answer some of those questions. Mandated, not mandate, we'll make sure to send the link to that presentation out to the budget committee. The challenge is it's a snapshot in time and we started that assessment in 2023 because this is a large county and guess what, mandates change. And so we will need to be wrestling with, you know, what do we do next with the service level assessment? How do we use this information as a county? Because I can, during legislative session, and we're in a long one, it feels like sometimes things can change almost on a daily basis. And sometimes with mandates, we don't actually know the impact of the mandate until well after, well after it's passed too. So it's, it's a challenge.
While in my introduction, I said that I'd lived in Aloha since 1973, that was my permanent address. I've also been able to live and work and study in Russia, Micronesia and Hungary. And I'll tell you, we are blessed to live in Washington County. I mean, no government's perfect, but we have great leaders, we have great administrators. Nobody here would want Ms. Angie's job. Or, or some of the other people in the administration. They do an excellent job. You look at Washington County compared to other counties in Oregon and other states and it's, it's fairly open and honest and I think, you know, we're very lucky as far as that. There's a lot of places that have a lot more problems that stem from their leadership than we do. And so I'm happy to come back, I like working with the people, I feel comfortable, I feel welcomed and I feel like, you know, they're honest partners with us and the community.
Yeah, oh, Grace up front, thanks.
I, I do have one question. I heard a two-year history of budgeting, but I was wondering how much of detail can we look at in past to see maybe a five-year? Because when I look at budget, I like to see the trends, what's changing? And then ask questions about why, why are they changing? Especially in large groups, you find all of a sudden the budget doubled in that particular year, why or was cut, so.
So we can send to the budget committee as a follow-up also where to access that information on our website. So you could, an individual could go back into previous adopted budgets and see the narrative of what happened. The reason I say narrative is sometimes the narrative, you need to pair the narrative with the numbers that are presented. So you'll see that two-year history snapshot in the, the budget. So I'll speak specifically to the 25, 26 budget. There will be a description within the narrative of what has changed and why. For example, loss of a grant or loss of revenue, that's what's attributed. Sometime, you can't tell that necessarily the why with the number, so that's where the narrative and the numbers mirror itself or marry itself together. Also, I, the staff put a lot of work into the budget presentation itself to help complement what's in the budget. So on the 28th, that's when the proposed budget, the budget message and the actual document, electronic too, so I'm pretending the physical doc, handed to you. But then that'll be your study period. And so you have the ability between when you get the proposed budget and when staff present the document to ask questions. And please ask questions because we can address some of those questions within the presentations. We also log all the questions you ask and then create answers to those questions and make them publicly available so community members can benefit. But you can actually look at our past budgets on the website. I've heard from some budget committee members that they do look at, you know, what, what changed, especially those that are curious to see some of that qualitative information as well.
Thank you. One thing that I think would be helpful to particularly the public members of the committees is to understand, the best way to put this, perhaps the road not taken and, and the choices made with respect to the reductions that the various departments needed to put forward as part of the budget process. Clearly, one would expect that some of those reductions are, will be reflected in the proposed budget. Some choices were made not to take some of those. Perhaps there are some other reductions that weren't even on the table presented by the departments. So what, what I'm getting at, I guess, is it would be useful to know the significant ones. It's not every single minutia, but the significant reductions offered by departments that were not taken and why. Reductions that were taken and why. Reductions that weren't offered up that were taken and why. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense and what, so part of my role as budget man, as budget officer is to deliver you a proposed budget. We go through days upon days of working through the scenarios that departments have, have proposed and lifted up. I can confidently say, and I'm going to speak specifically to the general fund, there was no good decision. So the board budget principles and priorities, what are we mandated to do? What do we, what is discretionary was truly reflected this year. So within the budget document, the full detail of the trades and, it's, it's not as easy, Dick, as a spreadsheet. And, you know, two plus two equals four and I know that's not what you're asking for. On the 28th, the budget message, there will be a high-level budget summary where I will go over, here's the broad cuts that were taken from each of these areas. So you can see going into this, the really challenging and difficult choices that, while keeping true to the board's principles and priorities. And we'll dive deeper into that as we get into the, the presentations that the assistant county administrators. So I think we'll get to some of that. If we're not answering your que, you know, where were some of these trade-offs, please ask that. But we have heard your last, the last meeting we had together, you do have an interest in that. So we're determining how to best do that and also at the same time honoring that we have amazing, I want to underscore amazing, and I appreciate Anthony lifting this up, department staff at Washington County and department directors who really know the services that were required and took, to provide and took such a thoughtful approach to their budgets. There is not one department that put forward a cut this year that said, hey, I think that I can take this cut and there not be an impact. So everything you're going to get this year is a series of really challenging decisions. One department director called it the parade of horribles and I, I, that's kind of tongue in cheek. But we are beyond the point of just, just, yeah, it's, it's hard, we're at the bone. So we will try to get you the clearest information possible. And I believe it's incredibly important for me as a leader under the board's direction to also empower our departments to combat with their best professional expertise in this area too. And I believe we have done that this year.
So just kind of continuing on that conversation, I think, I remember the first time I got the budget, it's 600 pages, it's this big, you know, so here's your book, I physically got one, and now you have two weeks to go read through it and ask, you know, questions. It's like, oh my God, right? So when you, when you think about this, you guys have been going through the budget process and very deeply over the last couple, couple of months, really struggling with, as you said, there's really hard decisions. A lot of key decisions that you have to make, a lot of how do you take the strategy and implement it, which is what the budget is. And a lot of tough decisions of what cuts were, were being offered that weren't, that you didn't take up, what you did, how you made those decisions, how you went through that decision-making process. And we get the book at the 28th and we have two weeks to try to catch up and try to really understand where you guys were and how you got to the end. Because I think we all take our role seriously, we're here to approve the budget. So to prove the budget, we want to make sure we do our due diligence to really understand what y'all went through and how you got to where you got and that it truly represents, you know, the best, best decisions for the county and all our residents. So it's, it's a tough assignment that we all raised our hand and said what we would take. And I think the big challenge is feeling that we start out 100 feet underground and we're trying to figure out how to get to where you guys are and really understand how those decisions were made and what the strategic elements were and how your thinking progressed over time, so. And I know it's hard, but.
Thank you for that. And I just have to say, I, I feel so honored to have this group as Washington County's budget committee because you're acting, asking such great questions and just the care going into this process. So when you, and I don't want to scare our new members too. So we have this evening, we have the 28th, you'll hear me on the 28th, then you walk away with this big book. We are a phone call away too, that's your study time. But if you are saying, help me with this, we are also happy to take your email questions, but also happy to meet with you too. Because thank you for that, Melissa, and it can be overwhelming and frankly, it can be overwhelming for staff too. So just be curious and don't be afraid to ask the questions as, as we work through this process. That's the best advice I can give. And Melissa, I know you have been an example of asking those questions. example of asking those questions and say, you know, help me understand. And I want to underscore, your help me understand then allows us to put that into a question to be transparent to the community. So, the community can learn more, your fellow Budget Committee members, and also that we can weave it into Budget Committee presentations too.
Are there any kind of restrictions for different Budget Members to get together and talk through this with each other?
Yes, yes. You need to, you need to be using staff as the conduit, and your Budget Committee deliberations need to happen within Budget Committee meetings. And we can follow up with how that links to the ORS and the Budget Handbook. I just don't know what pages that's handy on, but we can follow up with that.
Okay, so we can't have private conversations with any other Budget Member? That would somehow not be allowed? I mean, we're all looking at the same book. We're all trying to get, you know, understand it.
So, let me, let me work with County Council and let me give, get you that specific language in a follow-up. The reason I'm pausing on that, Melissa, is the county, the Board of Commissioners, and I'm just going to speak for the Board, but then I'm going to extend it to Budget Committee. How we handle open meeting laws is incredibly important, and we do not want to be violating the budget process or budget meeting law by any perception that there is a serial meeting. So, I hear your request, but let me work it through with staff on how to best respond to that. The reason I say that is this is also about upholding the public trust within the process and the public being able to have access to the meetings and to the conversation that the Budget Committee has.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay. So, next steps, we talked about April 28th. That will be the next time that we are together. If you do have questions between now and then, you can feel free to reach out directly to John, and you're always welcome to reach out to myself too. And then here are the dates of our upcoming meetings. One thing I didn't mention before is through our meetings, there is public input that is available for public to comment at Budget Committee meetings. The, what we call I Agenda Portal or the Meeting Agenda Portal, where you access this information, that is where the agendas, all of the Budget Committee materials is found. We try to keep that in one space so that it's accessible to the community, so that they have that one-stop shop, and you don't have to remember multiple websites or multiple areas of the county's website to go to to access information. Oh, two hands. Okay. Grace is going to come with the mic?
So, just so I'm clear, this is my first year too as a, as a Commissioner, not my first time doing Budget Committee stuff. But is the 28th session going to be in this room in a similar format, or will it be, and I would think that being, I'm hoping the longer sessions where we might need materials in front of us will not be in this format. What, can you walk us through the way this is going to look as far as setup?
Yeah. So, the format, we will actually be on the ground here. So, there will be long tables, kind of in a U format behind this screen. So, everyone can see, I'll call eyeballs to eyeballs to each other. You should have plenty of workspace so you can open up your book and spread out and have water or beverage in front of you. And then staff who are presenting will sit here and present from this table. Yes, we are working through the setting of the 28th because the 28th will be all the committees together. So, that is 20 bodies. So, we're figuring out how to create space for 20 bodies here. But then, for each of the committees, it will be that specific committee together. Good question. Chair?
So, I was wondering for May 14 and May 15, do you know yet which parts of the budget you're going to be presenting on the 14th versus the 15th?
We are working through that schedule right now. So, no.
When do you think you might know?
It will, at the latest, we will get that to you by the 28th, at the latest.
Oh, okay.
At the latest.
Cool. Okay. And then, okay.
Real quickly, so if we're on ESPD ERM, we don't need to attend the May 14th and 15th?
Correct.
Just for.
Correct, unless you want to.
Will those be televised or on YouTube?
They're on YouTube.
So, I have three questions that I have in total. But given that this has a schedule, I know we, this year, had a first-time experience of inviting the Budget Committee Members to a forum which we held on March 18th to highlight the budget journey so far. And at some point, I'd like to hear the committee's assemblage thoughts on that. Then, I'm wondering, this year, well, we'll get to it in a later slide about community input. And I'm wondering if we're going to be doing any promotion to the community different this year so that they know that they can come and provide that input during our Budget Committee meetings as opposed to waiting for the public hearing, or they can email it. And then, the last question I, I have is, there's a lot of federal change and a bit of uncertainty. And I'm being very careful about the word uncertainty because I don't know about the status of particular grants given lawsuits. So, will, will you put a stake in the ground with the proposed budget to say, here are the assumptions that we're making at this point in time? So, if, I don't know when they change or not, it's just a matter of adjusting. Those are my questions for now or later during the Q and A.
Okay, let's come back to Committee Member feedback. If the pre-session, the budget context was helpful for you, communications, we will, we will work with Philip Bransford to, some of you have met, some of you haven't, to get out to the Budget Committee, just the communications plan. And it would be, and what modes communications will be shared with the community, I would encourage all the Budget Committee Members to feel free to share that with your networks. If you're on social media, feel free to repost to encourage community members you're connected to, to engage in the process. So, that'll be a follow-up, Chair, that we'll follow up on as far as the how, like the mechanics of how we're informing the community. Regarding federal changes, and I want to say federal changes and/or state changes because they could be one in the same or they could be different. We, we are dealing with the spirit of time. So, the budget that will be in front of you as a proposed budget is based on what we know as of today. We are not budgeting with scenarios or hypotheticals of what could happen with the state budget or with the federal budget. If a condition would change, let's say, well, your Budget Committee is meeting, so during the Budget Committee process, staff would, could come forward if we had enough information with a budget amendment that you could consider to incorporate whatever that change would be before you approve the budget. But once again, this is basing something on hypotheticals. The Board of Commissioners have, has heard me say this, I don't like to meet chaos with chaos. We have enough on our plates. And so, we're only dealing with what we know today. And we just have to take things as they change each step at a time.
I realize I just made a mistake in looking at this slide for May 20th. Yep, I looked at four bullets and I went, oh, no, all those are special districts. So, but that very last one was the mistake I made. And I'm wondering if, are you and staff working to take the actual time, for example, the last two budget cycles that were needed for those three special districts, so that for the Washington County one, we could estimate date certain at 2:00, 2:30, or 3:00? So, that the Washington County SDL Budget Committee Members have some level of certainty?
Correct, yes. Yes, we are aiming to give the districts, so the ESPD ERM and North Bethany time certain assurance. The reason it is, I'm not willing to commit on what the schedule is for the Washington County Budget and Service District for Lighting. Chair, I know you said, like, what's the order? And I think you were asking this because a tip for Budget Committee Members, it's helpful to work through your book with what's the order of the presentations, that the presentations are going to be in. We're working on those presentations right now. And so, some may be longer than others. And so, that's why it's hard, one budget is, you see one budget, you see one budget. And so, once we have more, from a staff level feeling on timing, that's when we'll be able to commit to a schedule by, for the Washington County and Service District for Lighting. Best-case scenario is we get that information to you before April 28th. Worst-case scenario, you're presented with it on April 28th.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with some of the questions that you've already heard. If you turn to page 11 in this information, you've got, it, it answers your question specifically about, can I ask questions other than budget, other than at Budget Committee meetings? Can I consult other Budget Committee Members about details in the budget other than at Budget Committee meetings? And what, what is a quorum and how that's defined? And how many people have to pass something, a change if you want to make in that? It's not more, it's more than just the basic majority of those who are in attendance, it's the entire budget meeting. So, this is good information in here, take a few minutes. It's a good Q and A, starting on page 11.
We Commissioners, we don't talk to one another about budget outside of the Budget Committee meetings. We get at the 28th and boom, we wait to be with you.
So, what to expect on April 28th? We've talked high-level about this. So, this is your first official meeting. What we've been doing these last two meetings is orientation. At that meeting, you will, each Budget Committee will elect a vice chair, a chair and a vice chair. It has been customary here in Washington County that the Board of Commissioners does not serve in either of those roles. So, hint, hint to community members, you may be tapped to serve in one of those roles. Please know, we try to not make it a lonely process. Staff will be there helping you through the process, and we do have experienced Budget Committee Members as well who will help you. It's a great opportunity to kind of step into that role in a public-facing committee. So, I would encourage you to try, and once again, we're here to help. I will present a budget message and a high-level budget summary, Budget Committee Members and the community. So, simultaneously, the community has access to this full information, receive the full budget. You will receive a printed version for the public, their version is available via our website and link. I will present a Reader's Guide of how to navigate the proposed budget document, highlighting the sections of the budget document and, and areas. And then, we will review, as we discussed in the last slide, the detailed schedule of upcoming Budget Committee meetings and procedures. At this meeting, I will not comment on specific questions on the budget after the budget summary. This is really, I'm providing the information for you to then leave that meeting, go into study time and formulate your questions when we get to the Budget Committee meetings. And the Assistant County Administrators provide a greater level of detail of budget presentation. And I say that because otherwise, I'm confident we probably wouldn't leave that evening and you would have lots of questions. So, actually, any questions on the 28th and what to expect? We touched on this slide the last time we met, so I just included it in the packet just for your, just continued journey as we are on the same journey together. And that ends with question and answers. And I know the Chair had lifted up a question that she would like to pose to all of you, just the budget context, conversation that we had the last time we met, any feedback on how to make that more helpful in the future? Was it helpful? And, yep.
The, the May 12th meetings, I assume they're in the evening. There, there's a session for community. So, I'm assuming there's the possibility that we may get some community input or questions there. Will those be captured for the benefit of the Budget Committee?
100%. So, the Board of Commissioners and the Chair is pointing to, and I'm going to point to it, May 12th, which is.
I'm sorry. I was trying to be helpful.
These two sessions. So, the Board of Commissioners host information sessions or town halls with community or elected officials from, with different subjects or different areas. The Board is planning to host on May 12th an information session on the budget with the community. What is incredibly important is this cannot be deliberation, it is only information. The Board will not be responding to questions about the budget unless it's a procedural question on process. I want to underscore because, once again, citing back to Oregon budget law, it, it will be the same information that will be provided to you on the 28th. It is just in a different form to additionally help solicit information input from community. That, also that day will be an information session for Washington County elected officials. Our partners, cities, special districts have a close working relationship with the county and rely on the services that we provide, such as transportation, jails, assessment, taxation, and the list goes on. And so, this will be an elected, a board, opportunity for elected to elected to share information. Once again, not deliberation. And in these presentations, there will be a slide that County Council will review to make sure that we are clear and stay true to, to public budget, budget law in this process. So, no new information, I'm going to underscore again, no deliberation at those sessions.
I'll ask some first new time questions since I don't know any better. When you have that budget summary, does that have details on personnel versus capital versus ongoing maintenance, like breakdowns for the specific departments?
So, that will get into the detail, and it's Scott, right? Okay. Yeah, detail. So, the summary is more trends, what has impacted this budget. So, think of it from high level, and then we're going to go deeper. So, let's talk more about that on the 28th when I go through. So let's talk more about that on the 28th when I go through how to read the budget book and happy to sit down with you thereafter because it can be, it's a lot of information for a first timer, yeah.
I'm ready for the challenge.
I know you are.
And for the general Washington County, is that just the five Commissioners? Are there other people that are part of that or how does that?
Yeah, yep. So that was, I'm going to go back to that. So the Washington County budget is the first two columns. So the Board of Commissioners and the community or lay individuals is the second column.
This year, clean water services is of more interest to some people in the public. So that people don't show up hoping to talk about clean water services? Are you going to have, like, any notification when you put out the information for these public meetings that if that's what they want to talk about, this is, that's not the venue? Have you given any thought to that or?
We will be working through that clarity. And I think that clarity is also just within, within the Washington County budget process itself. We've seen community members confused on where to show up. For example, I live in North Bethany, so I want to comment on my services in North Bethany not recognizing the limited scope that the North Bethany Service District has. So Anthony, we're going to continue to clarify what these Budget Committees are and the role and, I'm going to call it service footprint that they have.
And just for my own clarification, they have their own budget committee program?
Correct. So, so just for the recording, the CWS budget process is Friday, May 9th, and the budget is released on... April 18th. So any other questions? And I want to come back to the question the chair had posed for the group.
March 18th, we had that budget info update. Maybe it was boring, but it was something we did this year that we hadn't ever done before. So I'm just wondering, should we try it again? Should we come back to this question later, you know, in our process? Or, I mean, maybe we won't know if we liked it until we go through what we have to go through.
Yeah, for a first time, I think it was pretty helpful. I didn't like some of the graphs. I think as a data-driven guy, I would have arranged some of it a little bit better. But I think overall, it was pretty helpful to see where the differences are. And I think overall, I want to know, why has it been negative for five years in a row? And so, and my understanding is a lot of it is just inflation. And property taxes don't keep up with inflation, hence you, you have a problem. That did come out in the presentation, so it was helpful for me at least.
Yeah, for somebody who actually sent in to the three roundtables, this presentation was a really good recap of the data that was in those roundtables. So if, if you didn't have the time to go through all those roundtables, it's a good way to get caught up a little bit to what, you know, what the discussions have been and what kind of conversations you've been having with the Commissioners over the last couple of months. So I thought it did a really good job of getting all that information that was shared in those three roundtables out to everybody. So there could be, you know, a little bit more catching up, a little bit more, you know, getting us all caught up to what the thinking has been and some of the conversations that's had. So I would definitely encourage you to do it again because I think it helped. And even, I attended the roundtables, but I'm still looking at the data again and hearing you guys talk about it. You always learn a little bit new every time you get, you know, same data, still get more insight. So I thought it was great.
Any other questions?
I've been trying to formulate this question well. This is my third year. And whenever I get the budget handed to me and I look at the short little time of window, window of time, I have to look through it and I, you know, I try to budget my time. I try to get through it and I try to focus on the things that are important. But my, the things I'm looking at may not be the things that end up being discussed in, you know, length in the committee, in the committee. And I, I was kind of wondering about Melissa's question too, because there's, when we're working with just solo, and I understand by the process and the public meeting law and everything, that's, that's necessary. But I'm, I'm just trying to think of ways that we could make this easier for us to focus on the things that are going to be discussed so that it's not such a scramble during that, that little window of time when we're talking about it where it's like, oh, I didn't actually focus on this that much when I was studying it. I better go home and do some homework, you know, pound through it that night. So I'm, I'm, I'm just looking for ideas. I don't have a solution for that because of the process, right?
I'll throw out an idea in this, thank you for that question. When you hear the budget message in the budget summary, so last year, for example, I had just shared the budget message. I did not go through a budget summary. This year, I will be walking through a budget summary. I would suggest the areas, and this is specific to the Washington County budget. If I highlight something on the Washington County budget in the summary, you may want to refer to that because it's going to be more significant. Also, within that summary, it'll be tied to the Board-adapted principles and priorities. So you'll see how they, they, and you'll hear, I should actually say, you'll first hear and then you'll see as you review the document, hopefully, how they tie together. So that would be one tip I would give.
Could we have a page to where the individual people of the ESPD group could post questions?
Yes.
That way, maybe answer your question. And no responses to that question, no meetings or anything? But these are questions that I would like to bring up at our next meeting.
So, so your question is, I'm going to repeat it to make sure I understand. Your question is if there could be some type of technology tool where Budget Committee members could be posting their question so you could live time, see what other Budget Committee members are asking for?
Where they're focused, going to focus on at the next upcoming meeting. So, yeah. Without, without any comments or trying to sway one way or another.
I have to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
I've not had that quite, I, yeah, I got to talk with the team to see what we can, yeah.
I'm expecting this year, since unlike the prior years with the charts that we had May 18th, I mean, March 18th, and I went back and looked at them. I'm expecting that your budget message will give us some idea of, as a result of your problem solving, to give us a proposed budget. This is the, the level of services from different areas that this budget supports. And here are changes that the community may experience if the proposed changes come to reality. Because I think that's different than, the magnitude to me feels so much different than the kind of problem solving we've gone through the last four years. You know, we've, we've used all the one-time problem solving we can, and now we literally have to trim back, trim back, trim back. Well, so I'm making the assumption that it, I'll get some level of clarity through what we'll hear on the 28th and just reading that first 35-page set that you usually provide in that whole budget summary section.
You will get some. It is not the full context because the more richer context is going to be within each of those funds or org units. And we'll talk about what changes we are, we've made to the budget document to hopefully tie some of that story, the narrative, that qualitative information to the fiscal information a bit differently this year. And I'll lay that all out. Chair, having worked with you for four and a half years, I am very confident that after the 28th, it's going to be, you're going to be yearning for more information and having questions after the 28th. And I, I'm sure many of you will because that is just high-level budget message and budget summary. And that's why we have such an extensive time schedule together so we can dive deeper into the presentations.
I think it was on that chart. Budget communications timeline, it says something here like May 7th and 15th Q and A submission deadlines.
Yep, yep. So, so May, and we'll go over this on the 28th. So let me just, for especially the benefit, because sometimes we can't remember from day to day, much less for year to year and for our new members. So the 7th is the date, you receive the budget on April 28th. So the 7th is your deadline to get to staff, what questions that you have going into the presentation. So we have time to develop answers before your first Budget Committee meeting. The 2nd, the 15th, is your also deadline so that we can have additional questions that you may have that are going to populate answers prior to the Budget Committee actually having your public hearing on approving the budget. There's a lot of staff time that goes into this, behind the scenes, working with departments, getting those answers. So we'll go through that timeline more specifically, how you submit your questions to staff, et cetera. Once again, the reason those dates are important is because that information is not just shared with the Budget Committee, it's also posted online for the full public to be able to access that. Did that answer your question? Okay. Any other questions from Budget Committee members? Okay, well then we are conclude tonight's budget orientation. And thank you for your time and once again, dedication. It matters. If you need me to push you from behind, I can go to...